Good morning. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
I would like to welcome everyone to our Thursday, August 29th meeting of the Board of Trustees of SUNY Erie Community College. Thank you, as always, for everyone around the room. And let's start, if we may, with our traditional around-the-room just introductions. Arda, would you begin, please?
Arda Klarano, comptroller. Cathy Cluston, senior vice business coverage.
Adrian Rannick, AVP in economics.
L. David, business manager, risk assessment.
Adam Patterson, dean of liberal arts and sciences.
Carrie Cawney, executive director of natural and health sciences.
Walker Gias, dean of business service.
Amy Nubel, executive director of nursing.
And Jane Grabson.
Good morning, Mr. Chris Hesch, director of telecommunication.
Angelica Morrison, vice president of marketing communications.
Jeff Stone, Board of Trustees.
Adiyam Sagai, president.
Candace Morrison, trustee.
La Metahan, trustee.
Cameron Lloyd, student trustee.
Ken Crowley, trustee.
Okiya Frazier, executive assistant.
Jeroni, IT.
Brian Vogel, IT.
And I see on screen Bill Ruder is there. Hi, Bill.
Good morning, everyone. Nice to see everyone. Bill Ruder, special advisor to President Sagai.
Anyone else online who isn't showing up? Okay. We do not quite yet have a quorum. We expect to shortly. And in the meantime, if we can have the presentations from our deans before we formally convene the meeting.
Absolutely. Well, good morning, everyone. Happy to bring the board. I know you were off for one month, but we've been doing a lot of work getting ready for our fall semester. So with that, what I would like to do is hand it to our AVP, Adrian, to talk about what we're doing on the academic side. Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning, everyone. Over the summer, we started, we entered a project to realign advisement within academics. And to that end, what we've done is we've taken our counselors, our academic counselors, assigned them by division, and trained them on the specifics of the programs offered within each one of those divisions. This is to better provide a student support network with the primary advisor being the faculty advisor, supported by the counselor, who is a specialist, in some sense, on the programs being offered in the division. That process has been undergoing, ongoing through the summer, when we did the training. We also had a lot of training over the summer on Workday. We brought consultants on site for Huron. We had them here earlier this week, actually, to help faculty and staff with how to do various operations within Workday, some changes that we made in Workday, and things like that. And with that being said, I'm going to hand it over to my deans for some updates that are division-specific, so.
Dean Patterson?
Thank you. Adam Patterson, dean of liberal arts and sciences. I would be myself, and then after that, I would be Dr. Khan, dean of natural and health sciences, and then Dean Juan Martinez, business and public health, and then basically I would be Curran, nursing, and then Adrian will be representing engineering and technology. So a couple of things. Everything's going well within liberal arts. Our biggest focus right now is general studies, making sure that students have a home. So our biggest thing is that we're noticing, we want to make sure that when students come to us from a general studies standpoint, they are able to find a degree path and a career path, and in doing so will hopefully help retention, but it'll also help them persist and will help them find a career path afterwards. One of the other big things for me, so my wife is a party planner, and a party always needs a single word to tie everything together. So for me, our word is "celebrate." So the idea of this is that we're going to celebrate our students, we're going to celebrate the faculty, we're going to celebrate the college, build community. And the idea of it is that we're going to have some poetry readings. My communication arts, they want to do some videos for the other divisions, the other areas, to showcase and highlight the good things they're doing. And then also, we'll be putting together, we're working with some jazz ensembles through our humanities program. I'd also like to highlight that this summer, the deans all worked together, in addition to Erickson and our AVP, Adrian Rannick, we put together, we worked with CSAT, which is the Charter School for Applied Technologies, and they had a summer institute with us, where they had 100 students come here who were high school students to gain college credits. We had 100% retention with them, and not only that, but their funder, when they came to take a look at everything, they were so impressed, they're asking us to present at their national conference, and something that they would like to move from 100 students to 150. So to us, it's a very big win, and I know that one of the things we did was an enrichment project, where we're able to showcase each one of the divisions and some of the degree pass programs that CSAT offers.
Dean, can you talk a little bit about our ASAP program, please?
Yes. So ASAP program is SUNY initiative, that the idea of it is to be very individualized. So we are taking 150 students per semester, and we are giving them a counselor very specific to their needs. In addition to it, we're also offering scholarships for limited students with, or limited student parents, that allow for after-school as well as daycare options, so that they can take classes. So the idea of ASAP is that we, we're going to be focusing on those students who are in that middle part, right? They're not the super high achieving, where they're going to be very linear thinking, right? And they're also not the students at high risk, they're the students that need that help, that need that push, they need somebody to hold their hands and walk them through this process. So the idea of it is that we will be, we'll be working with those at-risk or concerning students in order to improve retention.
Thank you, thank you so much.
With that, I will ask Dr. Khan.
Hi, everyone. Good morning, welcome back. So, as executive dean of health sciences and natural sciences, and reflective of the meeting yesterday that we had, we've run canceled. 25% of all the courses that are being offered in the Fall '24 are reflective of our community. And what that means is 25% of all those people that are employed in Western New York are either from a health science, which is biotech, all the way down to vision care, or, and which is inclusive of nursing, and then the natural science component. So we're very happy to be back. We have 12 health sciences, so it's biotech, it's clinical lab, it's our niche programs, our cash-in programs, which are also paramedics, all the way down to vision care, respiratory care, radiation. So we're really proud of everything we do. And of the 13 or 12 programs, 12 are accreditation. So our students are gainfully employed when they finish these jobs, and they're like as in law, or as in nursing, as in pharmacy, they take a New York State license, so we're very proud of them. On the other side is natural science. Natural science is rather, it's either biology, which is a focus to get into nursing, chemistry and physics. So those are great programs, and we actually employ everyone from geology to ecology to natural sciences, and our partners are stackable. They stand to UB for engineering science or Bostate, so they're both universities and they're all SUNY. So it's rather a bridge or a triad of development. So one new thing we're doing this summer, and we plan, is working, our number-one goal is for retention and enrollment, and make sure that they stay in our program. So it's not only student success and communication, it's students must stay. So we sort of met all summer, and we sort of kicked it off with the summer institute, and worked as a team. So what we're going to do is, one of the great things of the program, is that we're going to call it EXPLORE, E-X-P-L-O-R, and almost like Yale, which was EXPLO, which my son attended, it's like a summer program, but we're going to sit on Tuesdays and Thursdays in the STEM building. We've got this gorgeous 34, I think it's a $40 million building hall, that we're going to showcase with the Citibank and the Commons, and, well, you can help me out on this one. So they're general studies students.
Yes.
And we're working with Angelica, which is going to be techs, so those students that show a focus and an interest in the health sciences, all the ones we just explained, will be getting a text message to register and come and visit us from 11:00 in the morning. And we have a series of right-after indigenous days, Tuesday, Thursday, Tuesday, Thursday. We're going to kick it off for different individuals that our department has and faculty, and Tammy's going to be working with me on the nursing side, and they'll come to visit us, and it'll be almost like a mini-career fair, but not for retention, employment, and leaving the college, to make sure that they're retained in the college. So you finish this.
So one of the things that we found within general studies is that a lot of the students are either primarily nursing-focused or doctor-focused, but they don't know all the aspects or variations within the health field thereafter. And we have a lot to offer them, everything from vision care that offers solid employment right after graduation. So the idea of this is that for the general studies student, who, it's just a general degree, we want to help them have a specific goal with a career in mind, so that we can showcase not only what we can do, but also showcase that there's more to healthcare and there's more to their career than just nursing or just doctor.
Absolutely. And that's our biggest, when we talk about enrollment, our liberal arts or general studies, our biggest enrollment number of students, and so those students need the opportunity to do that. Thank you so much. Dean Martina?
So, stay here, so you're next.
Yes.
You can put the end of my, yes.
Thank you.
So, Doug Taylor, just off of what we heard here, we're going to do the same thing also for our business public, for business public service area, to help students who don't know and aren't aware necessarily of all the opportunities that are available in that division, to potentially find a home and move from general studies and into one of the degree programs there. Also, within my division, we actually had two micro credentials that were approved by SUNY. Our faculty are diligently working on revising and adding three more micro credentials in this public service area. We're looking to add a new certificate. And I had a little epiphany about a month ago. I am the chair for the Academic Appeals Committee, so every student who has been on probation and is dismissed, when they appeal to return to the college, we review all of their academic history. And myself and those in the committee have noticed some interesting trends that potentially, with improvements to advisement and making faculty aware of different areas, can potentially help stop students from being dismissed, stop them in the probationary process, and help them to right the ship academically, so they aren't dismissed. They don't have to take a break for an entire academic year, then think about coming back and have that time to start having all kinds of other things that potentially step into their lives. So I'm going to be piloting with my chairs and faculty of my division. We're going to talk through a process and advisement on how we can better support these students before they get to that dismissal process, which will hopefully, in turn, should we have successful, not just improve, the retention and persistence within my division, but that we can share that as the best practice for the rest of the college.
Excellent, thank you. Again, this also goes with our theme about retention is the new enrollment, so we have a huge opportunity to do these differently. Tammy, thank you.
Well, let's see, nursing is very vibrant. We look forward to partnering with all of our counterparts here, because without them, we wouldn't have a division, because they have to literally go through them before us. So we're going through many changes. One of the things, like our Level 4 nursing students, which those are the ones that are graduating and going out to work for into the community, we've partnered with ECMC, and now are going to have a, they do a psych rotation, usually just went to ECMC to do that psych rotation. Now they want to see our students in the community itself. They have outreach clinics that they have, so our students, our Level 4 students, are going to be able to not only see them at the inpatient site, but they're going to see them as an outpatient. So it kind of gives them that continual care. Another thing that we're doing is, we have 100% of our ed clocks, which is very good. And we're hoping to keep it up. And the last thing I had is that back in April, after we had our advisory board, I've had worked with Jennifer, who is had worked with Jennifer, who is the Director of Nursing at the SUNY U B, and she actually approached us, and we've been working diligently to do an articulation agreement, and I have it in my cap.
That's right, sign and seal.
Sign and seal and deliver, so now we can have an articulation agreement with a two plus two with SUNY U B.
And there's no, I want to emphasize, there's no limitation of how many of our students could go to U B.
Yep.
So that's a big deal in terms of that, as you know, U B is very competitive. In addition to that, Kathy, may I put you on the spot to talk about the grant that we received to support our nursing program, if you'll come by, please?
Sure. So, part of the governor's $8 million allocation to community colleges included funding for health fields, so we're using that money to bolster the staffing in the nursing department. So, we are able to, with that money, I think there was $221,000 allocated for health career-focused programs at the college, and we are using that to be able to hire two new faculty, and a mentor for the program, and one of those faculty would be the SIM Coordinator, and this will allow Tammy to expand her capacity, and continue the legacy of the great programs that she runs.
That's right, thank you. We have a, excuse me, an interest of about 400 or plus students who are interested in the nursing program, so we do have the interest. And part of the goal for the nursing program is that to really expand our presence at the city campus, we have the program there, but because of the limitation of resources, particularly with faculty, and I have to tell you, the team has been doing an excellent job of hiring new faculty under Christopher, in terms of really widening the scope of where we get our recruitment, making sure that we have a very diverse and competent staff to help our nursing program, so very proud of it. So, thank you, everyone, for presenting today, thank you.
Thank you, Deans.
Oh, sorry. I said, did we hire another dean? I didn't know we had another dean.
You did not get it.
So, on behalf of Dean Kathy Aiken, just a couple of highlights in the partnership front.
Yes.
Fergonia approached us to build into our Mechanical Engineering Technology Program a robotics track, which is going to articulate with their upcoming robotics programs, we're very excited about that. Also, with Mechanical Engineering Technology, we're looking at taking existing courses in our green building technology program, incorporating them as a certificate within Mechanical Engineering Technology, and offering that to students as an add-on to their Mechanical Engineering Technology degree. Both C two P Tech is going to be working with us in fall 2025 for their information technology program, they're ending their partnership with Albert State, and they're coming to us, we're going to be working with them. Autobody and Autotech, we're launching new A O S programs this fall, so we've gotten approval to change them from A A S degrees to A O S degrees. That's going to allow us to offer more industry-specific training for those programs, as opposed to having the students that deliver arts components, are going to be taking more Autobody and Autotech-specific training. Mechatronics, if you're well aware of our success with our Mechatronics Certificate Program at Northlands, we're going to be presenting to CWCC in September, a degree program in Mechatronics, that will, of course, our certificate will stack right into, so students in Mechatronics at Northlands who want to continue on to a two-year degree can come here, stack right into it, get their degree in another year. Northlands, with that being said, Northlands, we're also looking at opening up Autotech and HVAC at Northlands, so that's currently in the process, so we're going to be expanding our partnership with Northlands. And I already mentioned Mechanical Engineering thing, and I think that's about it, that's all I have, thank you very much.
I'm not sure how I forgot that, that's where I started, as a Dean of Engineering Technology.
Thank you so much.
Good way to start the meeting with a lot of good news, appreciate that. We now, I believe, have a quorum present, so what I will do in the absence of Secretary Carrie Phillips, is call the role. Melody Baker-Buischer?
I'm here.
Kenneth Crewley?
Here.
Leonard Lenihan?
Here.
Amanda Lowly, absent.
Candace Morrison?
Here.
Carrie Phillips, absent at the moment, but will be arriving. Jeffrey Stone, here. Cameron Lloyd, student trustee, here. Quorum being present, I'll declare the formal portion of the meeting open after our presentations, and call the meeting to formal order. First item of business is the approval of minutes from our June 27th. As was mentioned, we did not meet in the month of July, as has been the tradition, but we do have our meetings of minutes that were circulated.
Move to approve.
Move to approve, and a second?
Second.
Yep, all in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? Those minutes are approved, thank you, as always, Gail and others, for circulating those. We have some committee items for approval, what I'd like to do is move through those quickly, and then we will go into executive session. We will, we have several items to cover there, and with respect to the folks who will be joining us in executive session, I think that's what we should do, but while we have our quorum, and we can take care of these items quickly on the committee items for approval. So the first is budget audit and facilities, Chair Ken Crewley?
The first item is fees for service law enforcement training, can be just continuation of the normal reimbursements for people who are part of the training program. Second item is us working with the Williamsville School District for early education program, nice synergy there with the college and the school right around the corner. Third item is renewal of the workforce agreement at the Northland, certainly a very important program, of course, we need to continue. And the fourth item, just disposal of a couple of old vehicles and some four pieces of equipment that have all been appreciated and served their time, so I would move for approval of all four of those.
And five, actually, top of the next page, can be the fifth item.
Okay. Sorry, yeah. And that, I'd like to ask Kathy to just brief us on that a little bit?
Sure. Can you, I didn't care what you asked for, the brief on what?
Modern Campus Bachelor Contract?
So, modern campus contract is something, I actually have to thank Joel Lundin for working on that so diligently. That contract, we have five different products throughout the college that were being utilized by different offices, and so what we were able to do is work with each of those offices, analyze and make sure that the product is being used, and then combine them under one contract. So instead of coming to you five times for, for, five different products, we're coming to you once for one product. By also aggregating them together, we were able to have a cost savings for the college over the three-year contract.
So, I'd like to move for approval of all five items.
Yes, I would note, all of these were discussed at some length at the Budget Audit and Facilities Committee meeting in August, and have been, details have been circulated with our materials. A second to the motion to approve all five?
A second.
Second, thank you. All in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? Those items are approved, thank you, Ken. We next have some approval items with Chair Candace Morrison and the Curriculum, Student Success and Diversity Committee.
Yes, the first item, Walt Erickson is coming up, is the academic calendar for the 25, 26th academic year. The calendar and executive summary is in the material, so you can take a look at that. Erickson, do you want to speak on the other few items that we have in front of us?
Absolutely, there are four additional items to the academic year. The second is an extension, a one-year extension with Service Collaborative Western New York, this is the Buffalo Futures Hub, that's located at our 45 Oak location, a tremendous partnership to really help empower specifically within Western New York, the youth, as a related sense of employment opportunities. The third is a new memorandum of understanding with City Year Buffalo, which is a division of the AmeriCorps. Currently, at this time, City Year Buffalo works within the Buffalo Public School District. This is an opportunity for our social science, human services, and our teacher prep program to be able to work with that organization after they complete their education with year, for applied learning opportunity and internship. Reciprocally, individuals that go from AmeriCorps, City Year Buffalo, have an opportunity then to come to us, with the potential for applied learning credits or prior learning assessment credits to be earned while they come here to SUNY. The fourth is a renewal of our non-credit, non-tuition pathways programs, this is with Kenton, Journey's End, and Catholic Charities for the upcoming academic year. And lastly, is a one-year extension of our agreement with Middle Early College, and continuing as is from previous years, with this upcoming year for opportunities to discuss how we improve, working with Buffalo Public School District on Middle Early College.
Any further comments on any of these, Candace?
No, all were discussed during the committee meeting, and most items are renewals, so nothing more to discuss.
Right. Any further questions or comments? If not, a motion pleased to approve all of those five items listed under B 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5?
Submove.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? Those items are approved, thank you, Candace. Now, Amanda Lowly is not here, Dr. Sagaius, so, hi Karen. We have the personnel agenda and the resolution on the shared employee, do you want to talk about those now, or wait till later in the meeting?
We could talk, we could talk.
Okay.
So on page 35, we are asking the board to approve a leave of absent of our technical assistant, as well as section two, to hire Executive Director of Legal Affairs and Intern, and that is one that will be shared with the county, and the resolution is on the next page. We're also asking to hire Associate V P of I R A P. And then on section three, it's really to approve, these are new titles in the I T area, we needed to really look at our I T, and really at our job descriptions and the titles that we have, to make sure that it is really up to date, and these are the two new titles that the college is proposing to post and hire individuals in those two positions.
So the two new hires are in section two, and the others are title changes?
Correct, to post for those title changes.
Right.
And the resolution is on the 36th, page 36.
Right. And we've discussed the Executive Director of Legal Affairs previously in executive committee. Are there questions or desire for further discussion on any of the personnel matters on the Human Resources Agenda? If not, or about the shared employee situation between the county and SUNY area on the legal side? If not, I'll take, please, a motion to approve both of those items out of the Talent, Diversity, Equity, and Belonging Committee.
Submove.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? Those are approved, thank you. And we have our informational items coming up, but at this point, we will need to go into executive session on several topics, all of which are within the normal parameters of an executive session. For example, the sale or lease of real property, the employment and matters surrounding the employment of a particular person, and collective negotiations that are ongoing. Motion pleased to go into executive session for those authorized purposes?
Submove.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? Right, we'll go into executive session, I'll let you know as soon as we're back. Right, we'll go into executive session. I'll let you know as soon as we're back.
Welcome back everyone. Reporting that we spent time in executive session talking about the acquisition, sale, or lease of real property, we'll have more on that in a minute, various matters relating to employment of particular persons, and touched on matters relating to our collective bargaining negotiations, and we made one minor adjustment to Dr. Sagai's contract. So we took formal action on that, and we took formal action, I am proud and happy to report, on the formal lease for a term of 10 years with additional extensions of a new location for our South Campus. We, I know Janet is here today from the Buffalo News, and you'll remember we talked about this in December, the notion that we were exploring a way to maintain a presence in the South Towns while at the same time recognizing that the space that we were in on Southwestern Boulevard, while appropriate for 2010, a much higher level of enrollment, would not necessarily be appropriate now for where we are and what we want to do to create a better student environment in our Southern region for our students. One thing I'd like to say right at the outset, because it comes up frequently, is does this have anything to do with the fact that the Buffalo Bills are your neighbor, or they're building a new stadium in Orchard Park, right next to you? And Janet, if you'll remember, I talked about this in December, that the folks who bring this up, I just want to reassure all of them that none of what we're doing here is related to our good neighbors, the Buffalo Bills, with whom we have been good neighbors for 50 years in the South, or since 1970, and yeah, over 50 years. And they have been good neighbors to us before the stadium idea came to be, they've been good neighbors to us and we to them, while the stadium has been proposed and has begun construction. And we are able, could continue functioning at Southwestern Boulevard just fine with the Buffalo Bills as our neighbors with the new stadium scheduled to open in 2026. So it's not a matter of that stadium having nudged us to move our campus, we're doing this for our own reasons, and we wish the Buffalo Bills and the County of Erie and everyone involved on Southwestern Boulevard and ourselves for the next couple of years well, as this thing plays out. But it's a completely independent decision, and we look forward to having a new home at 50 Cobham Drive, that's C-O-B-H-A-M in Orchard Park, close to our existing auto tech facility, not very far from our current South Campus, but a facility that will be much more compact, will have faculty and students in close quarters with one another, we will have adequate but not excessive space there, we will have cost savings that are quite significant when you think about what it costs to maintain an 11-campus building on Southwestern Boulevard, lawns, snow plowing, electricity, heat, these are all expenses that we have. The County of Erie owns those buildings, and will ultimately be responsible for what happens as those buildings get repurposed. But for us, we're making the decision as a board in a very unified way about what we ought to look like in the South going forward, and we are very confident that this works best for us, for our SUNY partners, for our county partners, and certainly, most importantly, for our students, our faculty, and our staff. Dr. Sagai will have more to say about this, fellow trustees will have more to say. I'll just touch on a couple of points from the prepared statement that will go out to the press. We do feel that the new location will ensure a better student experience, as I've said, improve collaboration with faculty, staff, and overall student success, one of the pillars of our strategic plan. We think that this will improve the students' experience by providing an updated, modern facility, as opposed to facilities that are over 50 years old, convenience for our South Town students, shorter walk from parking, a new, modern, open library and student center with all programs and classes adjacent to one another. We just feel, as for the reasons I spelled out, that this is a very good move for us at this time. Also, and importantly, what we're doing here ties into and reinforces our overall goal as Board of Trustees, and as a county frankly, with our county executive, our county legislature partners, all viewing it important that we view Erie Community College, SUNY Erie, going forward as one college, not three siloed entities on three separate campuses. This is a very important concept that we've been working on for years, and we're bringing it to conclusion here in the South in a way that has us at a campus that makes much more sense for us if we view ourselves, as we will with SUNY, as one college and not three siloed entities. This will help us with the cooperation of our collective bargaining partners to avoid having duplicate operations at every campus in every area. We can't afford that, our students don't deserve that. We're consolidating areas where we can into one area, we're increasing efficiencies of operations, improving our student experience, and optimizing academic offerings, trying to be where we can, even in a sprawling county like Erie, closer to where our students are, so that they can access us in the most convenient way possible. The new facility, for those asking about timing, will be turned over to the college, it is anticipated by midsummer of next year, 2025. Classes are slated to begin at the new location that fall. We have approved today a lease with the Crowe Organization, which will have them building that facility out between now and June 1st. And there will be a transition period where we move in and outfit the new facility with the input from our faculty and our students and other concerned parties, so that it suits our needs on Cobham Drive. We will, in the meantime, continue to teach out our current students at South, who are there and are used to being there and are comfortable there, we will continue to teach them out there. We have the luxury of controlling the space on Southwestern Boulevard, it's owned by our county partner, and with the endorsement of SUNY, and we're using it for college. That gives us some flexibility to maintain operations there as we get set up in the new space. And we will, as again, continue to be a good neighbor to our Buffalo Bills partners and other community partners. We know that some of the local municipalities are looking at zoning changes there, to the extent we can be cooperative, we will, but again, that is independent, this decision is independent of any of that, and we look forward to doing what's best for our students to be over in a more efficient and effective, modern campus on Cobham Drive once it's built out. So South Campus provides a valuable educational touchpoint for the region, ensuring that the college is fulfilling its fundamental principles of institutional stability, which among other things aim to enhance the experience of learning and student services at the college by creating spaces that inspire pride in the institution. And I think at the bottom line, and that is the bottom line, we are going to be proud of what we will be developing here in the South Towns as the continued presence of Erie Community College there. I would like to compliment in particular Dr. Sagai for her vision as she became our new president, reimagining our presence in the South Towns, maintaining our presence in the South Towns. It's important to many county residents. We are a big sprawling country, county, we're as large as some states it feels sometimes, and to have a touch point in three different areas, I think, is still important, but we want to do it in the most cost-efficient way, the most student-accessible way that we can and for student benefit. So Dr. Sagai was the leader in terms of formulating what we should do here, assisting her in no small part was a committee made up of experienced people, legal people, folks who have some role here at the college historically and currently, who went through a careful RFP process, I want to make sure that people understand that, that this is something that as a public body, we need to make sure that when we have an idea, that we get input from a variety of potential partners, and then after careful consultation with them and with ourselves, we make the best decision about what we want to do. We're very pleased with our partner, the Crowe Organization, they're working with our council right now to put the finishing touches on the lease, but the broad outlines of the lease have been approved today by the Board of Trustees, and we look forward to going forward with a very exciting plan that we think is what we ought to be doing for our students and our community. Dr. Sagai?
Sure, thank you, well, thank you so much. This really, Jeff mentioned, but it really speaks to our vision and mission of the college, that we are here to serve our Western New York community and our students. And so I'm very excited and grateful for everyone for participating in the process to get us here, but this is also with the idea that I believe that SUNY Erie is going to be the community college of choice. This really speaks to where we're going with our vision, and certainly my vision. One of the things I want to highlight, this sign lease, it's going to be contingent on approval of State Ed, so the next process for us will be to present the signed lease to State Ed, and up on approval by State Ed is when we're going to continue our plan with this whole process. Again, I'm grateful and I'm looking forward to going through this journey, so thank you.
On the State Ed point, that is important. We do have, as a public community college, lots of partners, the, our county partner, our local sponsor, SUNY, all of our faculty and staff members, lots of folks get involved with something like this. But I would say with respect to SUNY, what this is doing is consistent with all the signals that we have been receiving from SUNY and from other community partners about what's important to maintain the mission of the college, but do it in a more cost-efficient way while serving our students. And I think we're achieving that, so I have a high degree of confidence about any future approvals that may be needed from our other partners. I know where we stand with our county partners, and SED I think is going to look very favorably on what we're doing here, SUNY I should say. I'd like, given the significance of this, I'd like to offer all the trustees the chance to comment. Melanie?
I'm thrilled with this decision, I think that it makes the most sense for our school, for our students, for, you know, one college, regardless of the fact where we're located, and just the budget implications, I think. and just the budget implications, I think, you know, it's really important for us to not lose sight of just our financial health and what it would cost us to stay there. It's not good for the college, but this is fantastic for the college.
On your point about the implications financially, we think we're going to come out well ahead on this financially, obviously, or we wouldn't be doing it. But one thing to consider and bear in mind is how old those buildings are on Southwestern. We don't know what will become of them, if anything, but we do know that we've had estimates that about $45 million worth of deferred maintenance is happening out of Southwestern. So we, we'll see what comes of those buildings, but for us, that's a big overhang that we're avoiding by making this move.
This is great news for the college overall, and as well as for, especially for our students, so I'm very excited about it. Thank you, Dr. Sagai, for your leadership in this area and for continuously moving us forward.
Yeah.
I agree with what Sven said, it's a good move for our students, it provides a good facility, and it's also respectful of our sponsors and the people who are paying for this because we are going to be saving a good chunk of money while continuing to provide the service to the students.
Student trustee Lloyd?
Just to agree with the other trustees, I think it's really great, a reassurance, you know, for the students.
Yeah, I think it's just the cost-effective and efficient continuance of our presence in the South towns. I mean, I think it's become clear over the last few years that we're a little overextended out in the South towns in terms of the facilities we have. This corrects that, but continues a strong presence for the students in the South towns in a more cost-effective and efficient way.
Very good. Well, thank you. So there will be, I know with Angelica and Dr. Sagai, the opportunities for those in the press to obtain additional comment on this or additional details as needed, but at this point, subject to everyone's thoughts, I'd like to move back to the regular agenda, please.
Can I get the results of the motions, the two motions that were approved during the second session?
Unanimous.
Unanimous.
On the motion to adopt the lease as presented, subject to council finalization.
Any change in the contract?
And the what? Yes, yes. Thank you. So now I'm back to, for board's information, and I think we'll move relatively quickly here, given that we've had two months' worth of business to do and a pretty important step today. But go ahead, Chair Crewley, on the informational items from budget audit and facilities, please.
We'll try and go through this really quick. The fees, the first item, fees for services, just standard information about the costs of running the law enforcement program and the hourly rates that are paid, nothing new in that report. Supplier report, all consistent with the budget and nothing standing out as an unusual expense item. The next three items, Labor Management Health, we continue to run behind a little bit in this year in terms of revenues and expenses, because we're experience-rated, that has something to do with that, but it's still got a half a year to run, and we should be okay with that. Budget to actual, the dashboard through June 30 is on target, things are moving along. We have no unusual items that are popping up, that are expense items that are going to affect the conclusion of the current fiscal year, so I think we're fine with that. Facility rentals, some, a few thousand dollars in rental fees collected, and then standard waivers for things like state civil service tests and so forth, where we provide the facilities at no cost. Capital projects, I, we have had some questions and issues with the city campus that are being addressed, I don't know if Dr. Sagai wants to get into that any further, and our minutes of the last meeting, which are pretty sticky.
Thank you, Ken, we'll accept all of those, and again, all of those were discussed at length at the committee meeting two weeks ago.
Just on the capital project, just...
Oh yeah, you want to talk about that now?
Sure, so the capital project specifically at City, the Skylight, we are putting the project on hold to resume perhaps in the winter, so our post-building is fully operating, and we are good to go for the fall semester.
Candace has had to leave, but for our curriculum, student success and diversity, we will accept the minutes for May 14 meeting as submitted. Marketing, I know Len, I think you were planning an August meeting.
Yes, we had a meeting where our new communication vice president, Angelica Morrison, gave a comprehensive assessment of our different communication abilities and an update on what we're doing, particularly in relation to the beginning of the new semester in the fall, in terms of outreach. Angelica, is there anything you wanted to add, or is there anything you'd like to stress from that report?
Not particularly, I think we've accomplished a lot in the last eight weeks since I've been here in this particular position. We did take a look, as we discussed earlier, at some of the processes and procedures, both internally and externally, and I think you guys have seen a boost in our digital advertising, so we're expanding that right now to include advertising in the Buffalo Niagara Airport, and also the NFTA bus system, I'm sure as you can see, you're zipping around the city and zipping around the region, you can see all these really cool ads from all these other colleges, so SUNY Erie is finally getting into that particular game. We're also working on creating a new television commercial, as well as, you know, working with some of the student groups to incorporate some of the activities and the skills that they have as well. And as you can see right there on your tables, would be a smaller version of the larger sports schedule that we created, and this is to just sort of boost interest and boost participation and, you know, team spirit into some of the athletic programs that we currently have. So feel free to take a look at the updated website, the updated homepages, as well as our social media accounts, and feel free to give me an email or a call if you have any questions, okay?
Thank you.
Thanks, Angelica, we thought we'd put you right through your paces immediately by making some moves once you got here.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Policy and governance, Melanie Baker?
We did not have a meeting, we will be having a meeting in September 1st.
And Carrie, strategic planning and assessment?
We have not had a meeting, we actually need to schedule our next meeting, I don't know where it is offhand, so we need to get that date, and then I can distribute it to anyone else that wants to attend.
With Amanda's absence, we'll take the Human Research and Personnel Transaction Report as filed with us, as well as the minutes from the last two meetings of the Talent, Diversity, Equity and Belonging Committee. Anything on Technology Committee, Carrie?
We also need to schedule that meeting, so I'll get that information out as well.
And as far as the reports, I will start, go quickly here, the weekly, the weekly calls and daily, sometimes calls that I have with Dr. Sagai and sometimes others at the college continue. I'd like to thank our partners over at the foundation, Mark Gallin, Chair, and Althea, and others who were so important to the success of the golf outing on July 8th, which was a big, successful event over at, I believe, Transit Valley, I think we were, and excellent, excellent turnout, all the foursomes were sold out, many people came for cocktail hour and dinner, and there was an auction, and a lot of good foundation work over there. Also, speaking of the foundation, we have formally filled the seat on the foundation board that is our responsibility to fill with someone from the Board of Trustees of the college, and that person is trustee Crewley, and I'd like to thank Ken for his willingness to serve in that, in that role. As I was talking to Mark Gallin about this, he brings a wealth of, lifetime, really, of experience, county matters, fiscal matters, governmental matters, business matters, and I think it will provide a very good means by which the college board and the foundation board can work in a very collective and positive fashion in favor of the college. So looking forward to that, more on that at the next meeting, which may well be our joint meeting with the foundation board.
Just want to say, thanks, Ken, I know that that's, it's such an important role, and thrilled that you're taking on that extra.
Thank you. Yeah. We have continued community and political and client events that I go to where matters relating to the college come up, it's always very interesting, and I just continue to be impressed with how engaged people are around Erie County with our success. They want to see us be successful, they're excited about what we're doing, whether it be South, or there's any number of initiatives we have going with Dr. Sagai's leadership, it's been very positive conversations around town. We had a good meeting with one of our good business and corporate partners, West Hur, just to keep them posted on what's happening, we met with Mr. Beeler and Mr. Gallagher, two great friends of Erie Community College, and they invited us to come over to their offices, and Dr. Sagai and I went and took, in a couple of hours, spent a lot of time talking about various initiatives that are going on and taking their thoughts. We appreciate their engagement, and they represent, there's a lot of conversations on the business side that go on, but that one in particular stuck out to me. We continue to have our monthly meetings at the Rath Building with the county executive and his chief of staff, Dr. Sagai and I, and other parties that come in. Those have been extremely beneficial in terms of making sure we all understand where we are, what's going on, and what the county's expectations are, and keeping them informed so there are no miscommunications about anything that we are doing. We had a very interesting event on July 2nd out at Northland, where Senator Chuck Schumer came into town and announced a $40 million federal grant that will create a hub between, among Syracuse, Rochester and Buffalo, for technology, essentially a chip manufacturing. This is under the CHIPS Act, and Senator Schumer, being the majority leader of the U.S. Senate, did not hurt New York in terms of its ability to attract some of that money, and he came here personally to Syracuse, Rochester and Buffalo to announce at Northland exactly what was going on with this money. It was exciting to be there, and just a whole host of community leaders were in that room.
By any chance, did you say building a chip fabricator, or the, like, I guess the processing of the chip manufacturing? I guess the fabricator is the people who make them, and then there's a pretty importance in the processing part of the chip manufacturing.
There's a big chip fabrication plant going in in Syracuse, it's just crazy amount of money, but this involves all the universities, University of Rochester, RIT, UB, artificial intelligence gets into it, it's just a...
Only reason, because, you know, we get a lot of our advanced technology from those small microchips, so I wanted to know if they're making them here instead of over in Taiwan?
Yes, that's the whole idea of that CHIPS Act, kind of, yep. I attended the CECO, our auto tech graduation, on August 10, or July 10, and that was just filled with proud parents and proud graduates of our very successful auto tech program. Dr. Sagai and I had a good meeting with Ambers town officials, including Supervisor Brian Culpa and some of his key staff members regarding the interaction that our college, especially here at North, has with the town of Ambers, the athletic fields, how are we doing in terms of helping students understand that there are many jobs in the public sector here. Juan, Juan was here earlier, but he talked about a certification program in public service. They, Brian Culpa said they have a lot of opportunity to hire graduates here to work for the town or other municipal entities, they have lots of employees, I think 3,000 employees, and it was a very large number, and to hear him express that, and we're going to take that meeting and try to see what, with what Juan is doing, whether we can connect our students better to careers with federal, state, or local government, those are large employers in our area, and there's certainly a need there. We will have, I was sorry to miss yesterday's convocation, I was traveling out of the state, but I understand it went well, and I want to wish everyone a good start to the new semester. And then last but not least, on September 23, we have the formal inauguration of Dr. Sagai as our president, following from SUNY's appointment last December. The chancellor will be here, there was an array of dignitaries and officials coming, and I hope everyone can carve out space at 2:00 PM on September 23 at North, he's going to be here to do that, and I know the chancellor is very much looking forward, I spoke with him personally about it, and he's looking forward to coming and sharing his views of what's happening here at Erie Community College and with Dr. Sagai's leadership. I'll stop there.
Thank you, thank you. Bob?
The pictures?
So we next have student trustee, well, we'll go with...
No, you can show the pictures.
No, 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 go ahead, go ahead, because we are probably...
I'll be, I'll be quick. So since the beginning of July, SGA officers across campuses have been putting together an event calendar tailored for students to be educated, entertained, and most importantly, an alternate opportunity to be involved and engaged here at SUNY this fall semester. A couple of tri-campus events that have been confirmed for this semester so far, we have, I guess I kind of want to start doing an annual back-to-school bash, so, well, you know, that's, I feel like would be better, but back-to-school bash, Wednesday, September 11, at 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM. On the fun side, we planned a Garfield Day for the students, which is going to take place Monday, September 30, from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM. A little educational, on my behalf, being the co-founder for Arbo, we also planned a financial literacy event here at North Campus, Thursday, September 12. And then also some SGA events that we put together in collaboration with athletics, we have the women's volleyball game, which is Tuesday, October 1, 2024, which also celebrates breast cancer awareness. And then last but not least, we also have a Cats versus Hocking Football College game, which is a home game, go Cats!
Yes, right.
And that'll take place Saturday, October 5. Also, speaking back to Arbo, we have a fundraiser event tonight down at Resurgers Buffalo, I sent the information to you, Gail, so I don't know if you want to send it out to everybody. You guys are all more than welcome to join and come see me co-host my first event, super nervous, but it's from 6 to 9, I look forward to seeing you all there.
I'm going to try to make it.
I appreciate you. The tickets are $20, so feel free, I appreciate you guys, thank you.
Thank you.
Very good, thanks, Ken. As for the college senate report, Colleen Quinn, I don't think I saw Colleen here today, but I know the senate has been largely off during the summer, so I think she'll have a report for us next month. And then Dr. Sagai, lots been covered, but fill in the gaps with your...
So, we love pictures, so a lot of the things that Jeff and Carmen said, we've been part of that, so advisement day, that has been great with our students coming in and with their family, a lot of families coming in with our students to register. We also had our new Northland orientation, this is in addition to, I'm going to bring Colleen to talk about our new student orientation, but we do a new student orientation at Northland, but we also have a partnership orientate, not orientation, but in-service that we do every semester to ensure that the team is on the same page, so we can welcome our students at Northland. The SUNY, the football, as you know, this is really our theme, and you're going to hear a lot of this, as you see this on your tables, about the different games that we have, it's really intentional to make sure that our college community and everyone involved is really able to participate, and this is a really great way for us to really have this in advance, so you have it on your schedule. Colleen, with that, do you want to talk about the new student welcome orientation?
Sure. Hi, everyone.
Hi.
I said it's not going to let me to sit anywhere. All right, welcome. We had last week, we call them new student welcome, basically it's additional to the online orientation, so last week we held one at each of our three campuses, South, North and City, and it was phenomenal. We had, I'm still getting the final numbers, but I'm going to say 850-plus students and their supporters, whether it was families or friends or whatever, and it consisted of a lot of information for our students to get started, obviously, just general information, meeting lots of people from the college, financial aid and student services, our trustee and all kinds of great people, and then we have, then after they get all their good information to get them started strong, we have the DJ and food giveaways, and it was fantastic to have hundreds of our students back in the buildings, our SGA was very involved, and it was just great. And just a little bit more about, so that was last week, we have three in a row, this week we're doing some smaller virtual orientations for some groups that I go to for a noon today, for example, so lots of welcoming and information for our newest students. In the spring, Dr. Sagai, I think we mentioned, I believe we did, but we added onto our online orientation, we added students, Cameron Lloyd being one of them, introducing segments, so adding a live component with students into our online orientation. So, so we're doing all kinds of great things, getting our students ready, and go Cats!
Thank you. Yeah, and this really goes hand in hand with what we're doing with the idea of student engagement as a whole, starting with that onboarding process, one that is online, but the in-person is a comp... the, the in-person is a complimentary of that. We have still opportunity to really improve our online, and that's going to be happening with Angelica, but really is to start our students at the right, but then what happens when they come, because that is really one of the things that we are really focusing on, to make sure that our students understand the advisement and who their advisors are, where do they go for, you know, things that they need help with. So very excited, but again, a lot of great work, but still some more work that we have to do. Next slide, please.
Before we leave, Cam, and his comments briefly there, congratulations on continuing as our student trustee.
Thank you.
We're delighted to have you.
And it was, can you go back one more? Back to the other slide, the SGA retreat that Carmen and his team and Colleen, that was done at the University of Buffalo, and I want to thank the president, President Setzic, and his team for really having our students spend, two days, did you guys spend?
Yes.
Two days, and really allowing for our students to be part of that, to really understand what that will look like, because part of that is going to be, our students are going to complete and graduate from SUNY Erie and then go on to either Buff State or UB.
That was exciting about that nursing news.
Absolutely, absolutely. Thank you. So just a couple of things, so the Buffalo Bison Saw, I was really honored to go over there and pitch the, the first, this was, yeah, 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 I didn't realize when I was a kid, but it was wonderful to, to be there, and we had our faculty and staff participate there, so that was exciting. Last Friday, that, I was there with our team, so, and then I know Jeff mentioned about the golf tournament with our foundation, there was also an event, it was her, Scott Beeler does an annual event appreciation of his, of his staff and, and the family, and this was at Darian Lake that myself and Kathy attended, and who was our person that we saw?
Carrie.
Carrie, I know, and it was, it was awesome. And Jeff, you were there too?
Same as Carrie, you were there?
Yes, we did, yes, we did, so it was, it was really wonderful.
No, Kathy, if Dr. Segai knew the words, so long as he knows.
Why not? Right? Listen, listen, I think I am cool, right? Yeah, yeah. My, my kids didn't believe it, right? So I had to show them a picture where I was, but they also didn't believe the Bison, they're like, you're going to do what? So that was-
It was a good pitch.
Was it? Did you see it? Yeah?
It was great, very straight.
Oh, good pitch.
I practiced.
That was a stressful moment.
Yeah, yeah, but I did practice to, to do that. I did live in the Bronx, New York, right next to Yankee Stadium, so I did that, let it manage. And then to the last, yesterday was our opening in services, we had a wonderful, and I want to thank the faculty and staff for being there, fully engaged, to really be equipped, ready to prepare for our fall semester, so thank you for everyone that participated during our in-service, so thank you.
Very good. Is that it?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. I want to jump back to something that was under chair report, and that was, Len Lenehan, you've been, you've been canvassing board members on, on our new slate. As you are aware of the Leno report, we will be electing officers of our board coming forward. We're also working, a number of us on various fronts, to address any vacancies, both current and maybe pending.
Sure.
That, so you want to talk about, about that, please?
Right, so yeah, the next meeting, we will be electing our officers, so I surveyed each of the members, I called everybody with the exception of Cameron, only because he's not eligible to serve, but had good discussions about people interested in serving as, as board officers. Jeff has expressed an interest in continuing, and I would have to say that everybody is enthusiastic about that, that prospect. Jeff has really done a, just a terrific job at so many different levels, so I don't expect you to have any serious opposition.
I can't say no, Jeff.
I'm trying to create some with the length of meetings.
Also, I talked to Melody, and she too is interested in continuing in her position, and I'm happy to report that no one else is interested in-
Ah, no opposition, okay.
So between the two, we've got the time.
Everybody's, you know, very happy with the job you've done.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Appreciate your efforts. I also talked to Carrie, our board secretary, about the future and her plans. I know you've expressed some concern about the workload at, at the city court, we also talked about, you know, potential you staying on, nobody certainly is interested in continuing on that, but I just sort of wanted to clarify if you do want to continue or-
Yes, I could.
Okay. So Carrie's going to be the candidate for, as well, and no one else has expressed any interest in challenging you or, and again, Carrie, we've appreciated your gritty, gritty, you know, assistance and everything we've done here as the board secretary, and so look, we've got a great slate of officers and everybody is interested in each of you continuing.
We'll, we'll take action on that in September, and if any minds change in the meantime or hats get thrown to the ring, that's just fine. Just to, in case people are wondering about this executive committee notion, exactly what it is, it's really an informal thing where between board meetings, we can get a smaller subgroup of the group together on an emergency or ad hoc basis sometimes or just for consultation. In my service on the board, it's always been the president or the chair, the vice chair, and the secretary is the core of the group, but we've also added, whenever I've been on, the most immediate available past chair. Now, in it's, let's say right now, Denise preceded me, but she moved to Florida and is not here, so Len was the chair before Denise, and so he's, the group right now is these four, but I would say that our board of trustees is, you know, I'm very happy and pleased to be working with all of you, and that we have a, most decisions are made collectively, so there's not this little group that somehow is taking the board astray, but it's some, it's a matter of convenience, the most immediate past chair usually has a lot of insight into what happened two, three, four years ago, that can be helpful to the current chair, and so that, that's how we've done it, at least while I've been on the board, and, you know, every board can make its own decisions, but I would propose that we continue in that sense, in that way, as long as Len is on the board, he would serve there, and then we'll figure it out if, if Len were to leave the board.
Right.
Okay?
Good.
All right, so that, thank you again, Len, for doing that service as you did last summer as well, and just kind of sorting us out. We'll take action next month on that. We do mention transportation each time, I don't think there's too much going on, but we have movement a little bit on due front, so might I-
Sure.
Go with that.
So one of the things, we are going to fully implement the survey in the fall to make sure that we really hear from our students. I know Colleen had done some work with the, with the company that has the transportation to make sure that ours align with the classes and the need of our students, so we're working through that, but I think really the survey will give us a huge indication of what it is that we really need to focus to ensure that our students are getting the best service with transportation.
Thank you. When you cover the state of the college, we're looking forward to that on the 23rd.
Can I just chime in on the transportation?
Sure, please.
So I have, so my sister registered for classes this year, she's all of mine at North, but she just has one class at City, but she gets a class at 9:50, class at 10:00. It's almost merely impossible to get from North to South Campus or to City in 10:00, so, yeah.
So we may, look, maybe look at her schedule?
Oh, I've rechanged the schedule, but that's just like something to point out, like if somebody has their class, yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's, okay, thank you.
Gail, I'd like to just ask for your thoughts on what we're doing with the board of trustees' schedule at the moment, where we stand with that?
Yes, according to the bylaws, it's the meeting, the board meets the fourth Thursday of the month, so those are the dates for the most part, and I gave everybody a copy in front of it, it was in your packet also, and with the exception of, I think, November and December because of the holidays, it's a different time. Ken Crewley did meet with the foundation, Althea, to compare those dates, and he doesn't have a conflict with them, so I don't know if all of you have, and I know, Melody, you said the September date?
Yes, September 26.
Yeah, but if everybody else is okay with it, we can go with that schedule, the only thing, in red you'll see the retreat dates, typically they've been in February, and trust, Melody, you also suggested that we maybe do a board meeting, retreat on the same day, so it could be a consideration.
I think that's a fantastic idea.
And then, but there's two alternate dates if, if it's preferred, or if the February date doesn't work, so if, once those dates are approved by all of you hopefully today, then I can move forward with reaching out to each of the committee chairs to schedule the committee meetings for the year.
Yeah. I would say if you can struggle to keep the February, that's probably the less busy time of year than April or May, or, so it also gives us a head start on the year, and we've had the retreat pretty much in February, the, in my time on the board, so, but we will combine it with a meeting, and that'll be the February meeting. Okay? Any further old business? Any new business that hasn't been covered? If not, then we, our next scheduled meeting, under your proposal, Gail, would be the 26th, can I hear that? September?
Yep.
9:00 AM. Remember, there will be some movement later in the year away from more, but we'll keep you posted if we change an event.
And I'll be at that meeting, I just won't be in person.
Okay. Very good. I think then we're ready for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Great meeting in the history of SUNY here.
I mean, it's from 6 to 9, so it's just 11.
I have a lovely rest of the world.